Absolutely.
Okay.
Madam Chair, we are all set. You are live.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to see here, and Mr. Heeman has joined.
Nick is having a few issues, so I'm going to resend him the link.
Okay, thank you.
You want to just wait another minute?
I got it.
I will. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's school board meeting. We will begin momentarily. We're just having some technical issues with our link to the live meeting. Thank you, Mr. Heeman. How are you?
Wonderful. Sorry. I had like nine links for this meeting. And of course, I clicked on the eight wrong ones until I found the right one, so I apologize.
I had the same experience, so I know your pain.
But you're in charge, so go ahead.
I, sure, or I will at least pretend to be in charge. How about that? So, welcome, everybody, to tonight's school board meeting. Thank you for joining us. We will begin tonight's board meeting with a roll call vote to ensure a quorum, please. Madam Clerk, over to you.
Okay. President Heeman?
Present.
Mr. Escobar?
Yeah.
Ms. Garcia?
Present.
Dr. Goldberg?
Present.
Vice President Pandey?
Present.
Mr. Ibiyemi? Mr. Ibiyemi?
I believe he is present. He might be having some technical issues. I see a triangle on his screen.
Dr. Santal?
Present.
Mr. Stevens?
I wonder if he's having the login problems, too.
I don't.
Mr. Thomas?
I don't see him yet.
Nor do I, Mr. Heeman.
Mrs. Thomas?
Present.
You have seven present and two absent. You do have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will next move on to the superintendent's comments. Superintendent, over to you. Good evening.
Evening. Hello, everyone. Good to see you all. I know Mr. Tyrell is not here this evening, or maybe he'll log on, but wanted to officially welcome him to the family. Such a staunch supporter of the community and really excited about working with Tyrell. I'm feeling just more and more hopeful. The sun is shining a little bit longer every day, and our COVID cases are starting to drop a little bit in Providence schools, and we're getting a lot of work done. We are wrapping up weeks of Black History Month programming, including some thought-provoking Infinity Group discussions that was led by Dr. Mullin, our own Chief Equity and Diversity Officer. March is right around the corner, which means the start of Women's History Month, when we honor the diverse contributions of just so many trailblazers. This Saturday is Dominican Independence Day, and while it may not be the feature crowd-pleasing festivities of normal years, it is still great to be able to reflect and take pride in such a rich and endearing culture. It is a time of celebration, and we have a lot to celebrate. First, I want to applaud my great team that's doing just round-the-clock work, keeping the wheels on the bus, and just doing great work. Their efforts and expertise just makes my job a lot easier. If the students are the lifeblood of our organization, then our educators form the heartbeat that keeps pumping. I know that the heart has had to work very hard and extra time as we continue teaching and learning through a very difficult pandemic. Teachers, just please do not think that these efforts are gone unnoticed and unappreciated. You are definitely the life of our organization. Over the past month, Providence Public Schools has received unprecedented national recognition for its heroic efforts to keep our students in buildings and keep the buildings open and keep our students engaged in in-person learning. First, we were featured in the New York Times about school districts around the country. The headline read, "Providence Kept Classrooms Open and Students Came Back." Then, the district made it into the Wall Street Journal for our efforts to reconnect and support our families and students who are chronically absent during this time. We had a phenomenal, I don't know if you have seen it already, but we've had phenomenal cover story, I think I've got the cover right, of the New York Times, the New York Sunday Magazine a couple of weekends ago. And you should check this out. It has not been easy, but it's been worth the heroic efforts of our teachers and all of our support personnel and our administrators, and they are certainly worthy of the heroism. And I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the great service and everything that you continue to provide for our city's children. And to that point, a responsible community will always prioritize the needs of its children whenever it makes decisions. That means we need to prioritize students' needs, and when we make budgetary decisions, that's going to be sort of how we drive and our fundamental premise for making those decisions. We will share with you tonight an overview of the budget process, as well as some forecasts that will make it clear that we must put our money where our mouth is. Thank you so much for giving me this time. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you, Superintendent. And I also would like the record to reflect that we have been joined by our newest board member, Tyrell Stevens. Thank you. And welcome to the Providence School Board in your first official meeting. I saw you in here somewhere. I'm not sure if you're still with us or not, but if you are, welcome. How are you?
I'm doing good. How about yourself?
Doing fantastic. Thank you. Thank you for joining, and thank you for serving. Our students need you. Okay, next on our agendas, we are moving to the election of officers, and for that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Sergio Spaziano, our board attorney. Mr. Spaziano, over to you to run our board elections, please.
Thank you, Ms. Pandey. Okay, can I get a nomination for President, Vice President, and Secretary?
I nominate a barber for you, Sergio.
It's COVID. It's COVID.
That's the excuse.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Nick Heeman to continue as President, Nina Pandey to continue as Vice President, and Mary Garcia to serve as Board Secretary for the incoming slate.
Can I get a second to those nominations?
I'll second that.
Okay, going once. Are there any further nominations? Going twice, are there any further nominations? Going three times, are there any further nominations? There being none, please vote by roll call on the following slate of officers: Nick Heeman for President, Nina Pandey for Vice President, and Mary Garcia for Secretary. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Pand, Vice President, I'm sorry, President Heeman?
Aye.
Mr. Escobar? Ms. Garcia?
Aye.
Dr. Goldberg?
Aye.
Mr. Ibiyemi?
Aye.
Vice President Pandey?
Aye.
Dr. Santal?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
You have nine ayes, zero nays. Congratulations.
Madam Clerk, thank you, Mr. Spaziano, and thank you, board members, for your vote of confidence in the slightly adjusted leadership team. Ms. Garcia, congratulations to you. With that, I will hand the reins back over to President Heeman.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Escobar. All in favor? Ms. Pandey, I'll call it, because it's going to be faster this way. I decided this last meeting, I'm just going to call the roll myself. The chair votes aye. Ms. Pandey?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye. Aye.
Dr. Santal?
Aye.
Goldberg?
Aye.
Mr. Ibiyemi?
Aye.
Ms. Garcia?
Aye.
And... Did I do Mr. Escobar?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
I think that's everybody, right? I don't want to miss a vote on such a critical item. Next is public comment, the right to be heard. I believe we have two people signed up for public comment tonight. Let's see. Looks like we have Cynthia Jones signed up first.
Hi. Good evening, everyone, and I want to thank you all for the opportunity to share. One moment. I'd like to start by introducing myself. My name is Cynthia Jones, and I teach Grade Four Inclusion at Anthony Connavalli Elementary. I will provide constructive feedback for the members of the school board and for Superintendent Peters regarding SMART clinics and the continuation of the Rhode Island Department of Education's Educators in Action Program. I'm going to advocate for it to continue. So, thank you again for the opportunity to share, and I will keep it brief. The first part I want to express in regards to the SMART clinics that are being held inside some of the school settings. In the last school board meeting, Superintendent Peters mentioned that these clinics would be staffed by nurse practitioners, who can prescribe medication to teachers, students, and staff members. While I appreciate the superintendent's transparency, I think there's a part of the program that would be a little problematic for me. As an educator, I currently take no medications, and it's been that way for a long time, and I'd like to keep it that way. I don't mind visiting with health professionals that can suggest ways to eat healthy, encourage physical activity, reduce gym membership fees, hey, health screenings, teach me breathing exercises and coping mechanisms, and also provide access to vaccines. Those are all really great things. However, if these nurse practitioners are in the schools primarily to diagnose non-preexisting illnesses or to prescribe new medications for serious medical conditions or to provide unsolicited medical advice or referrals, then I'll tell you right now, I want no part of it. The second part of my public comment is totally unrelated to the first and has to do with Rhode Island Education's Department Educators in Action Program that formally began in 2017 with former Education Commissioner Ken Wagner. It is an honor to be a part of this wonderful cohort consisting of educators around the state and policymakers. When Commissioner Wagner left in 2009, he left the program intact so that the next commissioner could take over, which she did. Commissioner Ken Wagner included us when the state was analyzing how much it would cost to repair and update all the schools around the state, providing them with temporary zones and talking about how much it would cost. Commissioner Wagner included us when he was making changes to the teacher certification from evaluation to the current professional learning credits. When RIDE decided to move from Park Assessment to RIDE Cast, even though Commissioner Ken said it would cost more money, he explains the reasons for RIDE doing so. Commissioner Wagner also included us when he and his team were working on how to streamline the certification process for teachers who already hold a bilingual dual-language endorsement like me and were now seeking an ESL license. And Commissioner Ken Wagner included us, the Educators in Action cohort, when he was thinking about providing school districts with virtual snow days instead of having them make up the days at the end of the school year. So, see, he was thinking ahead. As you can see, this is all important work that we, as educators from all over the state, have the privilege of being a part of. Luckily, the Educators in Action Program was embraced and sustained by the new Commissioner Angela Infante-Green. However, due to COVID-19, it has been a standstill, and since our last in-person meeting, which took place on March 10, 2020, I would like to see these meetings continue. So, I'm just here advocating for the Educators in Action Program to continue, because as you can see, we all did very important work. That is all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next for public comment is Sarah Gleason. I don't see Sarah Gleason listed in the participants list, although there is a phone number on here.
Mr. Heeman, I was going to say, there were a couple of folks who had called in, and I know that Ms. Gleason's name was one that was mentioned. And so, I'm not sure who's on those dial-in numbers, but I believe, if I remember correctly, there was Sarah Gleason and one other person who had dialed in or were going to be dialing in.
Yeah, I believe call-in user two is, was it Robin, who was with Ms. Gleason. I can't unmute that caller, however. So, they have to unmute themselves. They would like to speak.
Give it a couple of seconds for, to see if those are the individuals that we're waiting for. If not, and if they're...
Hello. Hello.
Yes.
Hi, can you hear me? This is Robin Halpernuder. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hello. Oh, okay. So, Sarah Gleason is now on. So, Sarah, if you can hear this, should she press star six so that she can read her comment? Is that what she should do?
Yes.
Is that, yep, star six.
Okay. Sarah, press star six. I think she can hear that. Okay, please bear me with me for just one moment.
Can I be heard now?
We can hear you.
Yeah. Sarah? I can hear you, but can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. I wanted to comment about civic education. There's a, bills in the legislature that are likely to pass this term requiring that civic education be required in the Rhode Island public schools. And I think after the January 6 assault in the Capitol, we all recognize the importance of students having some education in government, be familiar with the Constitution, and understanding how the branches of government work together. Rhode Island is one of only ten states that doesn't have a requirement for civics education, and I just hope that the members of the school board have an opportunity to discuss this among themselves and the importance that we'll have for the students of Rhode Island and Providence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah Gleason. And we actually do have a resolution on our agenda in support of the pending legislation, both the House bill and the Senate bill. They're a little bit different, but we are going to hopefully approve resolutions in support of those.
Great.
And this board has been consistent, particularly Dr. Santal has been very active in the movement for civic education in our state. So, I think you have a group of people here who agree with what you said, and we appreciate you taking the time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I appreciate it, too. Bye-bye.
All right. That concludes who we have signed up for public comment this evening. We can move on to school board comments. Any comments from members of the school board?
Mr. Heeman, if I can just further underscore the importance of civic education, my organization, Skills for Rhode Island's Future, has been conducting focus groups with high school students in some of our, you know, neediest areas where there's a lot of student learning loss. And in our conversations with high school students, and I get the privilege of facilitating those conversations with one of my team members, we are hearing loud and clear that students want not only more civic education, learning about current events, but they are also very interested in life skills. And I think COVID has really tested not only the social and emotional well-being of our students, but there's just a, you know, they're being forced to cope with new things in their homes, and we heard from students whose parents or grandparents have been ill with COVID, and they're not sure what to do. They're asking for CPR and first aid classes and how to talk to a doctor to ask questions. And I think it's really incumbent upon our district, not only here in Providence, but throughout the state, to take their requests seriously, and it starts with civic education, but it's much more than that. They're helping their parents pay bills. They're seeing medical, you know, expenses pile up, and they don't know what to do, and it's a big stressor for many of them. So, I hope that we can get this passed. I hope that not only our district, but I hope that other districts really look at what the students want to learn. It's civic education and life skills. That's all.
Okay. Anyone else have comments? Well, in case, well, people are thinking about what they'd like to say, I want to first begin by welcoming our newest member, Mr. Stevens, to the board. My, he defeats my short-lived record as being the youngest person ever appointed to the school board, and he's got me beat by a decent margin. I was appointed the night before I turned 25, so he's got me beat there and welcomed, and I think he will bring a, he and I had an opportunity to talk a little bit today, and I said to him that I think he brings a perspective that nine years ago I tried to bring, which was, having been a recent graduate of Providence Schools, bringing a perspective of, you know, what agitated me, what bothered me, what I felt was ignored by the school board as a student, and I think that sort of was the launching pad for me on the school board. And I think it's very important to have differing perspectives, and I think that's what makes this group a strong group. And so, I welcome him. I welcome his perspective, and I think he'll be a great addition to our board. I also welcome back our colleagues who have been reappointed. I want to thank Ms. Garcia for agreeing to put her name in as our secretary to complete our leadership team. And I want to thank my colleagues for their continued support from Ms. Pandey and I as the leadership team of the school board. First, you know, I think obviously anytime I have the opportunity to brag about Nina, I like to take the opportunity to do so, because I could never serve in this capacity without her, and I could not have asked for a better teammate and partner to work with for the years that we've been here together. And I think she's just done a tremendous service to Providence Public Schools, to our students and to our city, and I always enjoy the opportunity to continue to work together. But I also, I had the chance to talk with some of you today, is I announced a couple of weeks ago that this would be my last year on the board. I also, while I am thankful for the confidence to continue leading the school board, I do not intend to spend this entire year, my final year as the president of the board. What I'm hoping to do at our retreat is to see if we can form a consensus on where we go from here, because I would like to transition the presidency, presuming it's not going to be Ms. Pandey, who I don't believe is interested in the job, certainly. And I think she and I are on the same page that the time has come to transition sort of the responsibilities that we've taken on to other people on this board, because, well, you know, I've articulated the end of my time. I think, you know, not to speak for Nina, I think we're both on the tail end of our service here. And so, we want to try to transition our roles to other folks on the board while we're still on the board to be able to provide some insight and some guidance so that it's not the baptism by fire that both of us were thrown into when we stepped into the role of president and vice president, and we've changed those roles over the years. So, thank you for your confidence, and I look forward to helping the future leadership team of this board come together over the next year and transition some of those responsibilities. At our, now that we are complete, we can go ahead and recirculate some dates for a retreat and sort of formulate our strategy for the year, what we hope to accomplish, what we hope to do in order to continue to provide a public forum for the city of Providence and the people of the city of Providence to continue to be able to have a voice in a state-led turnaround of the school district to make sure local voice and the sentiments of the community are represented and articulated, and that we use what time we have to try to hold our state accountable, and accountable in a positive sense, to the goals that they have set for what they want to see happen with the school department and our continued progress as we move into the third, fourth, and fifth year of our state turnaround, as we're now in year two, obviously. So, we look forward to this new start, and we welcome our new member. And like I said to Mr. Stevens, you got a lot of people here who've been here for a while, and if any of us can be helpful to you in learning the ropes and helping you accomplish what you're here to accomplish, I know I speak for everyone in saying that we're only a phone call away, and hopefully, one day, we will all be in person together again in the future. So, any other comments from members of the school board before we move on with the rest of our agenda? All right. Items seven and eight are the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve items seven and eight as one vote?
So moved, Mr. Heeman.
Moved by Ms. Pandey. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Santal. Any discussion? There being none, I'll call the roll. Chair votes aye. Ms. Pandey?
Aye.
Mr. Ibiyemi?
Aye.
Ms. Garcia?
Aye.
Dr. Goldberg?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Escobar?
Aye.
And Mr. Stevens? Although I don't see him. Did we lose him?
We may have.
We may have lost him. He's back. That won't change the impact of the vote, so we'll move on. Item nine, non-renewal of a teacher's contract. This is one to be done in an open session. This is the non-renewal of the contract of Abdul Nuri Ali Mohammed. Or Mahmood, I'm sorry.
Mr. President.
Abdul Nuri Ali Mahmood.
Mr. President, this can actually be passed off the agenda that no longer needs to go forward.
Item nine is passed. Item 10 is a resolution in support of two pieces, excuse me. Item 10 is a resolution in support of the Safe Schools, Guns Free Schools Act. This is something that we have supported in years past with legislation. This year, the Senate bill has been appropriately renamed in honor of former Senator Harold Metz. This is a bill, in full disclosure, in previous years, I don't do it now, but I've had to recuse on this in previous years because I had the opportunity to serve as a lobbyist for the Rhode Island Coalition Against Gun Violence, and I've had the privilege during his time in the Senate to work very closely with Senator Metz on this legislation. This has got to be the most common sense of all of the gun-related or gun reform-oriented bills, a statement that, you know, guns don't belong on school grounds. So, I would urge our colleagues to support this legislation. I think this is, and obviously, this is, bill has been sponsored in the Senate by the Senate President, which you don't need to have a full-blown civics education to understand the magnitude of having that. Those bills tend to pass. So, I think that's a great development and evolution of the position of Senate President Ruggiero in not only sponsoring this bill but renaming it in honor of Senator Metz. but renaming it in honor of Senator Metz. Uh, and I also do think that as we are nearing the end of Black History Month, that to have the opportunity to vote on a piece of legislation named for, uh, such an important member of our community, uh, in the city of Providence and Senator Metz, not only in his work in government, but his work in our school system, his work as a principal, um, as a, as a leader in the community, as a person of faith. Just a great man overall, and, uh, I would urge folks to support this resolution.
President Heemend, I will make a, I will make a motion to support the resolution as presented.
I'll second.
Motion is made. Seconded by Mr. Escobar. Is there any discussion? There being none. I will call the roll. Ms. Pandey?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Abiemi?
Aye.
Ms. Garcia?
Aye.
Dr. Goldberg?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
And Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
And, uh, Nick, I think you skipped me because my name is misidentified. That's all right. I vote aye as well.
Sorry, you don't show up. Your Providence School Board room.
Yeah, I am, I'm the entire thing. Yes, aye.
Dictatorship.
No.
All right. That motion carries. So we will send that off, uh, both to the Speaker, to the Senate President, to the Chairs of the Two House Judiciary Committees, um, as well as the members of the Providence delegation. Uh, and hopefully this will be a year that that, uh, piece of legislation is able to move forward. The other resolution that we have on our agenda tonight, I had asked Ms. Graff to put together, and I think the comments we heard in public comment, um, were spot on. I may have even sent Yvonne a message about this while watching, uh, the attempted insurrection at the Capitol. I think no time, more so through the last four years, uh, have we seen the need for an, an understanding of government, an understanding of how government works, how government can be utilized for good, and what happens when good people don't step up and take control and, and get in the conversation is what you end up with. And there's often a, uh, an old adage of you get the government you deserve, and if we don't educate students on civics, on history, and we will get the government we deserve. Education opens doors, um, all of us can attest to that. Many of us on this board were the first people in our families to go to college, graduate from college, to get advanced degrees. And many of us were educated here in Providence. And I can tell you firsthand that, you know, I, I'm a lifelong lover of politics, of history, you know, government, and all of that was born of the education I got in Providence. And, uh, I know Dr. Santow has been active, um, with a group of students who filed a federal lawsuit on this. And though that lawsuit was not successful, it really, I thought Judge Smith's decision while denying, um, or about, I guess, granting a motion to dismiss, I thought his decision, um, really highlighted the need for, to get something like this done. And so this is some, uh, a bill sponsored in the House and sponsored in the Senate. They are somewhat different, um, so our resolution is really in the spirit of the goal of those bills, uh, which obviously if it's something that's able to move forward, would be reconciled through the legislative process. But I've spoken with, uh, Representative Amori, a former history teacher and an athletic director in East Providence, who's a House sponsor. This is a passion project of his. Um, and again, an important, important legislation, um, and I think appropriate that our board weigh in with the leadership and weigh in with our delegation to express the support on behalf of our school district, for the goals behind this bill as well. So if we can have a motion, and then we can have some discussion if anybody wants to say anything about it.
Um, I'd like to, to move that we pass, uh, pass the resolution.
Motion's been made by Dr. Santow and seconded by Ms. Pandey. Any discussion?
Uh, President.
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah.
I think that's Mr. Escobar?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so, so President Heemend, uh, so, yeah, really happy to sort of see the civic education, uh, resolution on, um, tonight's agenda. I did want to highlight that, um, and obviously this is going through the legislative process where there'll be amendments. Um, but I, I know that there was also some concerns from, um, um, some youth groups, students about sort of either, you know, wanting to ensure that there was a community voice in terms of that civic education curriculum, um, um, would be. And, um, in terms of just making sure that it was, you know, sort of equitable, um, sort of, sort of curric- curriculum when talking about diversity. So I, I, I wonder if, you know, does the resolution need to sort of, um, highlight making sure that sort of community parents and students are sort of involved, um, in this, uh, sort of in this process? When we're there, and that's more of a question, and, you know, I'd be, you know, I'd love to hear your thought, uh, um, Mark Santow's, uh, thoughts on this as well, but wanted to sort of highlight that before, um, the, the resolution goes forward to make sure that we're inclusive to even the, you know, our students and some student-led groups when they, when they testify, um, on this piece of legislation.
Yeah, I know, Travis, I think that was directed at, at Mark, but.
Whoops, sorry. I, my, I got automatically muted. I've been talking for the last 10 seconds. I'll repeat it. Uh, so I, I agree, uh, Travis, with what you, you, what you, uh, said, and that's actually part of what I was going to say as well. I mean, I think the, the bill is a, is a good start, but, um, but I do think it's, it's very important for there to be community engagement at the, the local district level, as well as the state level and, and, uh, in creating curriculum. And I think it's also extremely important that there be equal access to the, the sort of full range of civics education within districts and across it. Um, now, of course, that should be true for anything that we do in, in Rhode Island and in Providence, but especially because, you know, citizenship and democracy are rooted in political equality. Um, and there are many young people, particularly in a city like ours, who are disenfranchised effectively, if not literally. Um, it's really, really important that we build up from this bill to include, um, resources to support student government, student newspapers, uh, information literacy, uh, field trips, things that many wealthier districts are going to be able to pay for, uh, kind of on the side or through their own budgets that, that we may struggle to do in, in our own, uh, in our own schools here. And, and what I'd like to see at the state level is for that to be, uh, acknowledged as this bill is, is built. Um, all that said, um, you know, public schools were created to foster democratic citizenship in the first place, when they were created before the Civil War. Um, up here in New England, you know, Wendell Phillips, the abolitionist, described public schools as these little republican temples, uh, small R. Um, that, that was essentially the, the purpose of our public schools, was to educate people for democratic citizenship. And I think sometimes other priorities, uh, have sort of shifted that. And I think the, uh, the, the mistake embedded in within that has been made abundantly apparent to us in the last, uh, last month or two. So, um, you know, I don't know that we want to debate the details of the legislation. I feel like the resolution is consistent with the spirit of this. Um, but I, you know, I'm certainly open to rewording the, the resolution to reflect the concerns Mr. Escobar and I have just expressed, if, if there's a, you know, a, a general sense that the board wants to do that.
The resolution broad, um, particularly because the two bills are not the same.
Right.
And there's more detail in, in Representative Amori's bill than there is in the Senate bill. And rather than trying to pick one or, or pull out a, you know, language that we would like to see changed, uh, the goal here is to support the concept. Ms. Graff, in drafting it, um, made reference to, uh, community-based civics learning. And I think the details of it come in the efforts, um, during committee hearings and the opportunity to provide written testimony. We can do that as a board, we can do that as individuals. We can, um, support the youth groups and, and other, uh, organizations that speak on these issues. The resolution is simply to convey support of the general concept, rather than, you know, get down into the details of, of what the actual terms of the bill should be.
Yeah, and it says it pretty clearly in here, right, that we're resolving that we support civics education legislation, including, but not limited to, you know, uh,
Right. And I think to a lot of the extent, um, you know, if something like this passed, where we mandated school districts to provide, um, you know, baseline of civics education, I think it will fall to some of the districts to craft what that looks like. And we are able to inform that at our policy committee table, um, and working with the superintendent and the education commissioner and the, and education board, um, to inform what that should look like. Uh, and I guess one of the good byproducts of a state turnaround is they have to pay attention to us. Because, you know, they're, our students are their students, and our city right now is, is their city as well, so. Any other comments on this resolution? Okay.
I just, I just wanted to flag that. Happy to vote for the round.
Yep. And, and I know this has been an issue that you care about a lot and that you've raised to me privately.
I just wanted to flag that to make sure that, you know, release time.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and I, I share them with you, Travis, and I'll, I'll join you in testifying when it comes to it, um, to, to bring it up when the time comes.
Okay, I'm going to call the roll. Ms. Pandey?
Aye.
Mr. Abiemi?
Aye.
Ms. Garcia?
Aye.
Dr. Goldberg?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Santow?
Aye.
Mr. Escobar? Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Okay. That motion carries. And we will get a signature on that, and we will send it off to the Senate President, to the Speaker, and to the Chairs of the Education Committee in the Senate, uh, and in the House, as well as our Providence delegation in both chambers. That takes us to the report on contracts. Item 12 is Cengage Board Summary.
Mr. Heemend, if I may, this is an easy contract. This is a pass-through for LaSalle Academy. Um, this is for, um, their implementation at LaSalle Academy, uh, with their Big Ideas Math. It's a National Geographic platform. And so, again, pass-through monies from our district to theirs. Title V services. So I make a motion to recommend.
Has left the meeting.
All right, a motion was made for approval. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? There being none. Chair votes aye. Ms. Pandey?
Aye.
Mr. Abiemi?
Aye.
Ms. Garcia?
Aye.
Dr. Goldberg?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Santow?
Aye.
Escobar?
Aye.
And Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Aye. Vote carries, and the contract is approved. Just realize that I don't think I voted on items 10 or 11. So if the clerk can reflect that I voted in the affirmative on items 10 and 11, uh, I would ask that, um, she do that. It won't change the outcome of the unanimous votes. Uh, next on our agenda is a budget update. And with that, we'll turn it over to the superintendent and his team for the budget update.
So I'm happy to kick us off, Superintendent. Uh, we, we previewed a bit of this with the, uh, the school board earlier, or sorry, the finance committee earlier. So I'll go ahead and share my screen.
And I'll say, to confirm what Mr. Scott has said, there was an in-depth discussion at the finance committee on this. So we don't need to rehash every single detail of that presentation. That's why we have a finance committee, um, that is also meeting in a public fashion. So, uh, we don't have to go through the entire thing for a second time tonight.
And, and Mr. Heemend, just for the board's benefit, this is really, it is really informational. There is no vote on tonight's information. It's just to familiarize ourselves where, where we are current state with the fiscal '21 budget, um, with some additions, and there will be more to follow. And there'll be a series of additional finance committee meetings where we'll continue to dissect not only the '21 budget, but as we move into fiscal year '22, which is not on the agenda tonight.
Nina, can you give the 92nd version of the budget process for the benefit of our new member? Just sort of where we are in that process, although it is being sort of a different year.
It is. This is an anomaly for us. Yeah, normally we wouldn't be contemplating the fiscal year '21 budget this late in our academic year and our school year. But since the state did not pass their budget until mid-December, um, all of the shakeout of that budget has been now realized, and we've recognized that there are some additional revenues coming into, uh, the district. And with our current structure of us being under state control, there are some implications for that, that we want to review, uh, and again, inform the board of. Normally, the fiscal year '21 budget would have been wrapped up. There would have been ordinances that have all been formally adopted. We are still going through that process as we learn our final revenue dollars. We're simultaneously building out our fiscal year 2022 budget, which would be enacted for July 1. Again, we're waiting to see how the state budget shake out on that, and there are a lot of unknown variables. But that process is underway, and we will begin doing our deep dive on the fiscal year '22 budget, sometime starting in March, um, so that we can make recommendations to the city by no later than April with, with considerations for that, Mr. Heemend.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Scott, go right ahead.
Thank you. So I'll go quickly through these, since we, we did go in depth. But like, uh, Ms. Pandey said, we will focus on FY '21 today. I'll, recognizing this is atypical, given the late state budget passage. We'll spend next, uh, session, uh, in March, doing a deeper dive into longer-term enrollment and financial planning, as well as starting into FY '22 planning, and then continuing FY '22 planning in April and May. Uh, so with that, I'll dive into tonight, which is FY '21. So to share how this year was a little different from the timeline that, um, Ms. Pandey kind of explained is the normal course of action is. At this time last year, we were planning for FY '21, uh, for a roughly $15.7 million increase based on the enrollment and governor's proposed budget. Uh, and then the pandemic hit and sent everything kind of into, uh, uh, into the times that they were in. So, um, typically in the state, we would have passed a budget in May, and the state would have passed a budget in June and July. Uh, that did not occur. Uh, we did pass kind of an initial spending plan, and we reviewed that with the board. Uh, and it was, I think, voted on in July, and that was a, a level-funded budget. We had been kind of planning for that scenario where we received all this revenue, and one that was level-funded. So we, we started the year with, uh, since there was no state budget in effect, with the, uh, an FY '21 level-funded, uh, spending plan, which was shared, uh, publicly with the board. Uh, it wasn't until December that the state passed their, uh, budget. Uh, and then shortly thereafter, uh, the kind of disbursements to the, uh, the municipalities were made and individual school districts. So, um, over, we kind of have built, we had to build, uh, a starting budget in, uh, in, uh, in the spring of last year. Now, we've had to kind of rebuild that with the latest state budget, uh, state budget passage. So that's where we're at now, which is we have a revised, uh, FY '21 and hopefully final spending plan that incorporates the obligations for state and city aid. So on the right-hand side, you'll see what those changes are. And, uh, you know, our primary sources of revenue are state and city funds. Uh, so what you'll see here is an $8.5 million increase from the state, uh, and that is based on largely increases in the funding formula. Uh, there's also a $4.9 million increase from the city. Uh, and that is based on the obligations made under the Crowley Act, uh, which, without going to, happy to go into detail, but the kind of, the, the overview of this is the Crowley Act obligates cities to continue funding school districts at the same rate or at the same increase that the state, uh, provides an increase. And so for Providence, that translates to a roughly $4.9 million And so for Providence, that translates to a roughly $4.9 million increase for FY21. So, uh, taken all together, that translates to a 20, uh, sorry, $12.3 million increase, uh, to, to Providence. Uh, for FY21, which is the fiscal year we're currently in, uh, through, through the end of June. When we think of this revised spending plan, uh, kind of the, the spend here falls into two buckets. Uh, the first are increased needs and costs in FY21, um, which you can see here. I won't go kind of line by line, but to give you a sense of what some of these are, um, you know, some of this is e- expenses related to COVID that have, that have, uh, caused increased expenditures at, at the district, whether that's replacement of technology for lost or damaged, uh, equipment, whether that's additional professional development curriculum for the virtual learning academy that we're operating, um, uh, is one chunk of this expenditures. There are also some related to just kind of, uh, uh, medical increases or out-of-district special education tuition, uh, that we are, uh, uh, need to cover expenses for. Uh, and then we also have DOJ-required instructional coaching that we are, uh, obligated to do under that agreement that we will be doing, uh, this spring. In terms of the other part, in addition to kind of increased needs and costs, there are acceleration investments that we know are absolutely necessary, given, uh, the needs we had before the pandemic, but certainly, uh, are exacerbated by the pandemic. So this is going to be a longer-term effort, certainly, that, that'll, that'll continue on through the summer and well into next year. Um, but, but, uh, we believe that the FY21 increase will allow us to begin and continue some of these things, uh, through the annual school year. So some of this work is already underway, uh, whether it's, uh, some of the after-school tutoring that we've jump-started this year, uh, to support students and accelerate their learning, uh, particularly for those who, you know, had to miss school in the spring. Um, there's also, uh, you know, additional social emotional supports for our students in the form of, uh, uh, mental health professionals and supports. Um, and, uh, we're also looking to, similar to, to what was done last year, uh, where we made investments to, uh, purchase a K-8 curriculum that we found, found was incredibly important. Uh, having a high-quality quick, uh, kind of district-wide curriculum, uh, uh, for elementary and middle. Uh, and we, we thought that would be important to continue for next year at the high school level. So, uh, the FY21 funding will allow us to accomplish that. So taken together, uh, these, these are the kind of the big, big buckets of spend that we, uh, have for our FY21 revised, uh, spending plan. Well, one thing to note is we, um, just to name, this is not necessarily FY21 specific, but it's, it helps kind of tee up some of the future conversations we'll have on longer-term financial planning. Um, because our schools were shut down, uh, late spring, uh, we did not incur a number of the expenses that we normally incur, whether that's transportation, utilities, uh, uh, facilities and custodial, custodial services. So in the spring, when our schools were, were shut down, uh, we did, you know, because expenses and revenues were unknown at the time, uh, uh, we're, we're able to not, to, to, to achieve a surplus in FY20. And the plan is because we are no longer kind of have, we don't have the financial backing of the, the city should a, uh, rainy day occur, um, that we are looking to establish, uh, over time, reserves that allow the district to be on, you know, financially sound footing. So in many other states, this is state law that districts have, uh, a rainy day fund or reserves to cover any unattended expenses, uh, that may, that may arise. And, uh, while typically and historically, these would have been covered by, uh, the city. Uh, this is stuff that, you know, that now we are, since we are no longer under city control, if a boiler breaks, if a roof collapses, that's on us to, to cover. So, uh, those are expenses that, uh, we are preparing for. So, uh, obviously we need to prioritize acceleration spending, but should, um, should there, uh, you know, should, should, should we be able to start building a reserve fund? We, we believe that's absolutely necessary to cover any unforeseen expenses or uncertain revenue, which we think is, um, you know, i- is absolutely likely, given the times that we're in. So I know that was rapid fire, um, but I'm happy to pause and add, add, answer any questions people have about, uh, this, uh, FY21 budget presentation.
Mr. Heman, if I can just have Mr. Scott, I want to direct you to the slide that shows how the calculations are made. And I know what the, um, city's obligation would be under the Crowley Act and how that's calculated. So, Mr. Scott, I know that you provided this and we talked about this at finance, and so I won't spend a ton of time, but just for the benefit of the board members, um, that were not able to join us at the finance committee meeting, the additional obligation under the Crowley Act suggests that the city would need to contribute at the same rate in which the state was, which is what Mr. Zach said earlier. And I just want to point you to those calculations. Uh, Mr. Scott, if you want to just kind of reiterate that and walk through where these numbers are and how that roughly $4.9 million increase for CD8 is calculated.
Sure. So, so the, the way it's calculated is, uh, it's based on the state's total increase in their state aid to school districts. Uh, and then you apply that percent increase to, uh, the city's obligation. So for example, in FY20, uh, the state obligated or, or, uh, the state aid, uh, was 997 million across the state. That increased to a billion, uh, and 34 million and 21, which represents a 3.7% increase. So for the Crowley Act, you then apply that 3.7% to what was provided from, uh, by the city in FY20, which was 130 million. And that's where you get the, uh, the 134 or roughly 135 million, uh, for FY21.
Great. And Mr. Scott, I also just want to reiterate for, um, for the board members again, is the process is, this is now what we know in hand and there will continue to be conversations between the district and the city on these obligations. Um, and we don't know the full extent of the increase for fiscal year 21 yet. And so we've asked Mr. Scott to continue to update the board either via finance committee or at the full board meeting on where we land as we continue to unpack what these numbers represent and where the obligations lie, both on the city and state side. And Mr. Heman, I will leave it at that and, and kick this back over to you for any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Going once. Okay.
My, my only point of clarification is that just to, I, I know, just to at least say how I understand it differently, this is not our, like, projected obligation. This is what we understand the obligation to be. So I don't, in, in our mind, it's not necessarily up for interpretation, but.
Certainly. Yep. No, this is under the Crowley Act. This is what we understand the contributions to be. Um, and I also just want to reiterate, the source of funds again, and I know this was clearly articulated in this slide, is state funding Formula 8. So I want to make sure that we are not conflating this with any of the additional revenues that have been, um, that have been actualized in our district through any stimulus money. That is a separate pot of money that is not necessarily included in the Crowley Act. So this is a, this is probably the first time that we're seeing something like this at the board. And I know this is all new to all of us because we are going through this process for the first time. So it's just, I think, when I use the word unpack, it's really for myself and other board members to understand what the obligations look like under the Crowley Act. Mr. Scott, I apologize if I, that was a misleading statement on my part.
No, 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 not at all. Um, so, yeah, you're correct. This is all based on stated. So the, you know, the 8.5 that works, that will receive from the state this year in FY21 is all from the state. It is not, does not consider, contemplate or include, um, uh, federal dollars.
Okay, thank you. Next is item 14. Uh, I need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 42-46-4 and 42-46-5A1 personnel for a discussion of non-renewals.
Motion made, Mr. Heman.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded by Mr. Escobar. Uh, it's a roll call vote. Chair votes aye. Ms. Pandey?
Aye.
Mr. Ibiemi?
Aye.
Ms. Garcia?
Aye.
Dr. Goldberg?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Santow?
Aye.
Mr. Escobar?
Aye.
And Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
The ayes have it. We are in executive session. For those of you, uh, still watching and interested, we will leave this meeting here. We will go into another, um, WebEx room for executive session where we will handle those matters there. We will come back out at the end of that, uh, and report out on the votes taken. So for now, this, uh, meeting, um, will close and we will move to the other one. All right, just let me know when we are, uh, all set to go with the live stream and the recording and we'll get this done.
You are all set. You are live.
Okay. All right, uh, motion to seal the minutes.
Motion.
So moved.
Motion was made by Ms. Pandey, seconded by Mr. Escobar. Any discussion? There being none, Chair votes aye. Ms. Pandey?
Aye.
Mr. Ibiemi?
Aye.
Ms. Garcia?
Aye.
Dr. Goldberg?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Santow?
Aye.
Mr. Escobar?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Minutes are sealed. Um, I will turn it over to Ms. Garcia for the report on the number of votes taken, um, and the general character of those votes taken in executive session without mentioning any names.
Um, so I have, I have, I have noted here, so I have one, two, six votes, um, all of the affirmative. Is that enough detail?
It was one vote in favor of the superintendent's recommendation for non-renewal. Another vote in the other case in favor of the superintendent's recommendation of non-renewal. A vote to seal the minutes of executive session and a vote to come out of executive session. So that's four votes. You're muted.
I counted the vote to enter into executive session and the vote that you just did, just now to seal the minutes again.
Okay. You don't have to count those two because the public could see those two votes. So.
Okay.
So we're good there. Better to be over-inclusive than under-inclusive because that's what gets you fined by, uh, the Attorney General's Office. So we have four votes taken in executive session. They have been reported out. That concludes our business, uh, here tonight. And the next item would be a motion to adjourn, which you think should be made by our newest board member. So, Mr. Stevens, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely. I'd make a motion to adjourn this meeting on today.
All right, motion is made. Is there a second?
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? Chair votes aye. Ms. Pandey?
Aye.
Mr. Ibiemi?
Aye.
Ms. Garcia?
Aye.
Dr. Goldberg?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Santow?
Aye.
Mr. Escobar?
Hi, good night, everyone.
And Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. We'll see everybody next month.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Take care.
Bye-bye.